I have the time at seven o'clock. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order if you could please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is issued in the flag of the United States of America and give the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Heaton, can you take the roll, please?
Yes, Mrs. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
And Mr. Potter.
Here.
Mrs. Reed, as we all know, Mr. Raymert was the Board of Trustees' president. The prosecutor has recommended that we vote again for a new president to finish out the year, so I would be happy to take a nomination for someone to be board president through the end of 2021. Someone like to make a nomination?
I'll nominate Jake Stubbs to be president.
I'll second.
Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Stubbs, you are president. Mrs. Reed, you will continue to be vice president through the end of the month. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll turn it over to the fiscal officers' report.
Back to me.
Play the Uno reverse card.
Let me turn on my video.
Was there a draw four in it, Jim?
This is like ping pong tonight. Okay, first of all, good evening, everyone. Mr. Potter, I want to welcome you to the Board of Trustees.
Thank you.
Mr. Potter took office on November 24th and was sworn in by County Prosecutor Matt Heck at the November 17th Montgomery County Township Association Gala banquet. And, Mr. Potter, of course, you know your term will end on December 31st of 2023.
Right.
So I look forward to working with you these next two years.
Yeah, me too.
All right, I have given you three sets of minutes. The first one is the special meeting on November 6th, which was the JED public hearing that we had at Valley View Junior High in Farmersville. The second set of minutes is for the second meeting that same day, which was a work session with representatives from the three other jurisdictions about the JED. And the third set of minutes is our regular meeting on November 8th. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
I do not see any.
I didn't see any either.
I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
I'll read.
I'll read.
I will second.
Thank you. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. I've also sent you the financial reports for the month of November. You have the fund status reports as of November 30th. You have the year-to-date cash summary by fund. That's 11 months. You have the month of November cash summary by fund. And you have the November receipts and the November payments. And I want to point out just a couple of items. First of all, receipt number 151, the total amount of that receipt is $9,737.62. But the part I want to point out is a $4,908.94 insurance reimbursement that was for damages caused by the June 18th lightning strike. And Mrs. Close, as well as Mr. Holbrook, did a lot of work to track all those expenses we had. And that is our reimbursement from our insurance company, less our $500 deductible. So thank you for the work that the two of you did. Vouchers 931 and 932, and they total $5,664, and they are both to the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation. And together, they represent the entire workers' comp premium for 2022. And I pay that now because by paying in advance, we do get a 2% discount rebate. And finally, warrants 5,529 and 5,530 totaling $512,646.73 to the City of Germantown represents the second half 2021 tax collections for all of our joint levies: parks, pool, fire, senior citizen, EMS fire from 2010, and road. And with that, are there any questions about the financial statements? Hearing none, if I could have a motion to approve the November reports, authorize the payment of all the November bills, which include warrants 50,528 to 50,535, and vouchers for, excuse me, 818 to 951 for payroll direct deposit, tax withholdings, and other electronic payments.
Some moves.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Once again, I need to report that Julia Smith with Sunshine a Bag is not with us tonight. She is sick again. This is, I think, the third month in a row that she hasn't felt healthy enough to come out. So we don't have any information from Sunshine a Bag. I will remind you that we have not used any of the funds from the Trust Fund this year. We did appropriate $2,000 for 2021. If you wish to make any disbursements this year, tonight would be the best night to do it. I'd rather not wait until the budget meeting on December 30th.
How big of a... I was just wondering if we can get Julia or Julie to come to that budget meeting and specifically state in there the potential for a donation that night, because I hate to pass a donation without her coming and presenting. It gives her one more opportunity this year. Are you totally opposed to that, or is...
Not opposed at all.
Okay.
I will definitely need to add that to the agenda in the announcement of the special meeting.
Right.
Which I can easily do.
Will you do that at the beginning, and then if we could give her the option to join us online, or call in, or however, if she's unable to make it?
Okay. That works for me.
Okay. I would prefer to do it that way.
When we meet on the 30th, I will have paid all of our year-end bills, and I will be able to pay that, whatever you might decide that night.
Okay.
Okay, I will follow up accordingly. All right, the senior citizens levy. We talked about that, I think, a couple of months now. It will expire at the end of next year. The levy was last passed as a replacement in November 2017. And along with Mrs. Reed, we finally had a senior oversight meeting. I attended with her on December 8th. Sorry. I was at my Lions meeting tonight, and we get fined for that. Anyway, we attend...
Do it start that?
It's a dollar fine. Anyway, at that meeting, the Senior Oversight Committee did recommend that the levy be placed on the May ballot as a renewal and not as a replacement. We can do it on May. We could also do it in August, or at the general election in November. The deadline for submitting for May is February 2nd. I also recommend that we put it on the May ballot. And I have given you a resolution that we will start the process tonight if you wish to put it on the May ballot.
Would you like to do that since you're listening?
Yes, yes. I just didn't know if we wanted to discuss putting it on the May. I think that's the best course of action.
Yeah, I think May's the best.
All right, so I will... A resolution, I'm requesting the Montgomery County Auditor's Office certify to Germantownship the total current tax valuation of Germantownship Incorporated and unincorporated areas and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by a senior center levy, a one-mill levy for a five-year period of time of renewal tax, beginning tax year 2022, with first-half collection in 2023, to provide funding for providing or maintaining senior citizen services or facilities authorized in the ORC Section 6705.19, to be voted on the May 3, 2022 primary election ballot.
And Mrs. Reed, that would be Resolution 2021-43.
I will second.
Thank you. And that, when I did hear you read, it would be a renewal.
Yes.
Is there any discussion of Resolution 2021-43? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2021-43 is adopted. I would point out that I did attend the retirement reception for outgoing Germantown Mayor Steve Bader on December 6th. It was a very nice event, and I was able to hear some very nice complimentary speeches about the mayor. He served eight years, as mayor, four years as councilman, and has did a great job for Germantown. Back on, or the same day, actually, I went to the reception. I attended the all-day Auditor of State Uniform Accounting Network, or UAN as we know it, the Year End Update webinar. I also attended most of the all-day Ohio Office of Budget and Management Ohio Grant Summit webinar, the very next day, on December 7th. I did miss some portions of this webinar, which I will watch again once it's posted on their website. On December 8th, I attended a small portion of a site visit meeting with OTRMA Risk Consultant Kathy Gonzalez, Chief Antic, Mr. Holbrook, Scott Hamilton, and Mrs. Close spent the better part of three hours with her. But we at least got through the review. And in preparation of our renewal with OTRMA for next year, I also submitted their annual questionnaire back on November 28th. And one thing we learned that day, and I didn't even realize it's in the questionnaire that I sent, is that we then get a credit on our insurance for checking the driving record of all township employees, as well as the drug tests that Mr. Holbrook and Scott Hamilton have to periodically take, required by their jobs. Okay, moving on. At present time, all of our township elected officials are covered by Public Officials' Bonds through OTRMA. The trustees are through OTRMA. My bond is actually through Travelers Casualty Insurance Company. Your trustees are all bonded for $10,000, and I'm bonded for $195,000. There's no charge for the trustee bonds through OTRMA, but there was a one-time $915 charge for my bond when I took office. That averages $228 a year over the four-year term. In addition to which, the township also has a Liberty Mutual Surety Bond through Southern Trusty Insurance here in Germantown, and that is for $50,000 for Mrs. Close as trash clerk and $1,000 for all other township employees. And the Southern Trusty Bonds in total cost $256. Well, recently, state law changed, and we now have an opportunity to switch from Public Officials' Bonds to $195,000 Faithful Performance of Duty Insurance coverage through OTRMA. And that would cover all elected officials and all township employees, and that cost would be $260. There's obviously cost savings using this Faithful Performance of Duty Insurance, but there's also a couple other reasons. With our Public Officials' Bond, should there be a loss, even a finding of recovery? The bond company would pay the township the loss, and then they would come after us as individuals to pay them back. With Faithful Performance of Duty, it works like all of our other insurance coverage through OTRMA, which means if there is a loss, we would just simply file a claim. OTRMA would not come back to any individual to pay back the loss. And on top of all that, there's just less paperwork involved, because our Public Official Bonds have to be approved by Judge Reddick, so that's another step that would not have to happen. So I'm going to recommend that we switch from our surety bonds to the Faithful Performance of Duty Insurance, and at the same time, then cancel the Southern and Trusty Insurance policy, and of course, all of our bonds then would be canceled. I don't know whether there would be any refund of my bond fee. Even if there isn't, in the long run, I think we will save money by making the switch. So if it's something that you wish to do, we want to do it by resolution. We make that 2021-44.
Is there any downside that you see?
Wendy at Burnham and Flower did not point out any downside.
Okay. I'm fine with switching, as long as the rest of the board is in favor.
So somebody can introduce her?
I'll introduce Resolution 2021-44. Would you like me to read the whole thing?
Well, sure. Read what you want to read.
I'll introduce Resolution 2021-44. Whereas Germantownship Montgomery County is a member of the Ohio Township Association Risk Management Authority, a political subdivision risk pool established pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, ORC 2744.081. Whereas in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 3.061, the township must adopt a policy by resolution to allow the use of an employee dishonesty and faithful performance of duty coverage document, rather than a surety bond, to cover loss by fraudulent or dishonest actions of employees and failures of employees to faithfully perform duties, the following shall apply to the policy. One, an officer, employee, or appointee shall be considered qualified to hold the office or employment without acquiring a bond on the date the oath... On the date the oath of office is taken, certified, and filed as required by law. Two, an officer, employee, or appointee shall have the employee dishonesty and faithful performance of duty policy in effect before the individual's term of office or employment, and the officer, employee, or appointee shall not commence the discharge of duties until coverage is documented. Three, all officers, employees, or appointees who would otherwise be required to file a bond before commencing the discharge of the duties shall be covered by and are subject to the employee dishonesty and faithful performance of duty policy instead of a surety bond requirement. Four, the coverage amount for an officer, employee, or appointee under an employee dishonesty and faithful performance of duty policy shall be equal to or greater than the maximum amount of the bond otherwise required by law. Five, elected officials prior to taking the oath of office and holding office shall obtain approval of the intent to use the township's OTRMA coverage agreement and affirm that the township's coverage complies with ORC 3.061. That approval shall be obtained by the Germantownship Montgomery County Board of Trustees. Whereas Germantownship Montgomery County's employees dishonesty and faithful performance of duty through the OTRMA coverage document complies with ORC 3.061, and be it resolved.
Thank you for reading that.
Thank you, yeah.
Is there a second to Resolution 2021-44?
I will... I'll second, sorry.
Any discussion of the resolution? If not, I will call the roll. Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
And Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-44 is adopted. All right. Next Thursday, December 16th, I will be attending Montgomery County Auditor Carl Keese Annual Update up at Sinclair College. If anyone else wishes to attend, all are welcome and be happy to carpool if anyone else plans to go. Reminder to everybody, we do have two upcoming special meetings. We did mention the first one a little bit earlier, and that will be the 2022 Budget Review Meeting. It will be on Thursday, December 30th at 7:00 p.m. The second one will be our organizational meeting on Tuesday, January 4th, excuse me, at 7:00 p.m. And finally, Mrs. Reed, tonight is your last regular meeting as a Germantownship trustee. So I want to thank you for your service to the township. And during these past almost two years that you and I worked together, not only you've become a personal friend, but you and your growing family...
Start growing.
Have also become my neighbors, which is wonderful. So it's been a pleasure working with you, and I believe you brought a different and also a valued perspective to the board, both as a female and as a resident of the incorporated area of the township. So we will miss you, look forward to maintaining our friendship across the street from each other. I hope someday you will come back to serve the township and the city community in some capacity, perhaps rebuild the public service.
Thank you.
And without, I am done.
All right, and I'm used to my cemetery meetings where we have no visitors, so I skipped over visitor comments. So if there are visitor comments, now would be the time. If you come, state your name and address for the record. Okay, all right, we'll move on. That was apologies from me on that. We'll go on to Chief's report.
Hi, I should have recorded the date, but it was either the first, second, or third of December. I was contacted by Lindsay Arath-Jay of Newcomer Funeral Home, and she contacted me and wanted to know if Germantownship had or wished to create an indigent cremation program. Typically, she told me municipalities and townships have a fund of $350 to $500 that is set aside by local governments for the less fortunate who have need of a cremation service. I told her that I did not know of any in the 27 years that I've been here. However, I would bring it up to the board and that we would probably have someone contact her in the coming months into the new year. Newcomer cremates on-site, and I told her I'd bring it up to you guys, something to think about maybe in the future. Other than that, I have Santa returned. The breakfast with Santa was, I'm declaring it a success. We photographed 86 children. There were many family or group photos. This year, we changed it a little bit. We sent it out an email rather than actually printing one, because that morning, our printer went down, and we couldn't print them. But I think it actually worked out, because many families got numerous pictures sent to them, because they took two or three. And Santa and Mrs. Claus were also glad to be back. So with that, that is my report.
All right, thank you. Jeremy?
Just a couple of quick things. I think Mr. Hestand received some paperwork from the Montgomery County Engineers' Office talking about, apparently, Sugar Street in Sunbury, which is not the, or not Sugar Street, Cherry Street in Sunsbury, which is not the Cherry Street that runs out of Germantown, there's another Cherry Street in Sunsbury, was apparently not on our road mileage inventory for the township. We got a letter from Tori Watson, who is the real estate administrator for Montgomery County. And I have to wonder if they didn't stumble across this in all of the work they're doing to vacate the old State Route 4 right-of-way, where there's some people that actually bought that lower land south of Sunsbury. That's been a real fiasco, from what I've heard. But anyways, come to find out, this, however many feet it was, it was, oh, 169 feet of roadway wasn't on our inventory. So we probably weren't getting at least $12 or $15 a year the past 100 years. But they did add that, and they passed a resolution on November 30th, the county did. So that was actually sent to the Highway Department of Transportation to be put on our inventory. So you'll see our inventory go up by 169 feet. So I don't think there's anything we need to do on our end as far as accepting that, but I'll, I tried to contact Tori today about it, and she was not in, but I'll stay on top of that. And if there's a resolution that we have to pass to actually accept that linear feet of roadway to actually have it added on to our inventory, then we'll do that at the next meeting, our first meeting in January. It's no rush. The only other thing is, as I talked to Mr. Hestand, my draft budget's completed. I'll be sending it out in the next couple of days for you guys to review before the December 30th meeting at 7:00. Scott and I continue to mow the tree limbs across the township roadways. Obviously, we had quite a bit of trash along the roads over the weekend from the high winds. Got called out a couple, two different occasions on Saturday, and actually got called out this morning on one on Segal, and got that taken care of and cleaned up. Last thing I had under other, we had Units 108, 116, and 214, which is the two dump trucks and the pickup truck treated with Crown anti-corrosion treatment. And I wanted to publicly thank the City of Franklin for the location to take our vehicles and have them sprayed, so that kept all the mess. It's kind of a messy process, but we got that done, and they've been doing it for quite some time. They seem pretty happy with it. So I think it's chief insurance to try to keep that salt corrosion off the dump trucks. With that, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. The zoning inspector's report.
Hello, thank you, guys. You saw my report come through. It is kind of lengthy tonight. First on the list is thank you to Mrs. Reed for your service. It's been great working with you, and like Mark said, you have a different background and being a mom and teacher and all that good stuff, it's good to have a mix of different, you know, backgrounds on the board to keep things moving forward. Congratulations to Mr. Potter on your win. Look forward to working with you, even if it is only for a month.
Yes.
And thank you to everyone that helped, participated, or watched the Christmas Horse Parade and attended Christmas in the park. It was a pretty good success this year, considering the weather that we had. And thank you to all of the generous residents who have stopped by my office or reached out to wish well wishes to everybody here at the township and bring Christmas goodies. Valley View Local School District Project update. I met with the project manager for the new school building construction just last week. We discussed the different approaches we could take to allow the new construction to conform and/or get variances for the building, and what to expect from the zoning department in the township. It wasn't really an official, it's just kind of getting started. So they are starting with the, we will need conditional use and variances for that property. So that's going to be quite a large case here coming soon. Upcoming board meetings. The VZA has a hearing on Monday for case number 2021-57LSD. If anybody has any questions about those, they can be directed to the zoning office. The VZA and Zoning Commission organizational meetings have been requested to be a joint meeting for this upcoming year, so that will be held on January 11th, the day after your first regularly scheduled meeting. So hopefully, anybody that needs appointed or anything like that can be done prior to their first organizational meeting. Upcoming changes to the boards. There are two positions for each board, the Board of Zoning Appeals and Zoning Commission that will be coming available for either a continuation or a newly-elect. The VZA has Mr. Blakely expiring the 31st of this month, and he is a seated position. Mr. Cox also expires the 31st. He is an alternate. On the Zoning Commission, I have Mr. Glander, who expires the 31st, who is a seated, and Mr. Croft, who was an alternate, but due to his election win, he will be expiring on the 31st of this year as well. And I will advise the And I will advise the board who wishes to continue, and if we need to appoint any other folks at our first January meeting, unless you want it sooner.
January's fine.
Okay. And I conclude my report.
Can I? I have a couple of comments.
Yeah, just state your name and address for the record.
Mark Cross, 7444 South Diver Road. Couple things, as far as the Board of Zoning Appeals, when I looked at the board appointments, one is incorrect. Valerie Hill's term should end in 2022. We have two people, Joe Scholler ending in December 31st, 2025, and Valerie Hill ending in December 1st, 2025, December 31st.
Yeah, I see that. That's just, he said 22.
2022. They both can't expire at the same time.
Right.
Only one can expire for a year.
We went through that earlier this year, and made sure that they
We did. We're good, and, yep.
That was incorrect. So Mr. Blakely and Marty Cox.
It's the only one, though.
That's the only one in there. Mr. Blakely and Valerie, or Mr. Blakely and Marty Cox have decided to re-up. So if the board wants to, you know, appoint them again, that would be fine tonight, you don't have to worry about that.
We'll wait till January.
We'll do it all.
We'll do it all, yeah.
I have heard from Mr. Blakely, I haven't heard from anybody else yet, so.
So the other question, this is a little bit more complicated. There was a VZA meeting scheduled for last Thursday, December 9th, and it was canceled. What was the reason that it was canceled?
We did not have a quorum.
So meaning, who authorized you to cancel it, I guess?
I'm the board secretary, so I canceled it because we did not have a quorum.
So how did you know you didn't have a quorum? I mean, you, I guess the bottom line is, the meeting was advertised in the Germantown press.
Correct.
It was, it was, there was a thing, a piece of paper on the door. So really, ideally, you should have had the meeting. And then, had you not had the quorum, you would have a roll call if you didn't have three people. And you could either continue, ideally continue the meeting. Now you're going to have to go back to the, and put another notice in the Germantown press.
Which I have, yes.
Are you going to send out letters to everybody?
I've already done that, yes.
Because we had the situation, which I found out Jim Lopinski showed up for the meeting Thursday night.
Okay.
Or Jim Lopinski, because he had no idea that the meeting was canceled.
I had not been advised, advised previously that I would have to hold the meeting and have a roll call and determine there was not a quorum. Previously, I always just canceled the meeting ahead of time to not waste anybody's time.
Well, but, but again, in the case, it would be just like this meeting, if one of the, one of the trustees decided they didn't want to have a meeting, but it's already been advertised. I think the way to go should have been, you have the meeting, you have a roll call, if you only have, did you have three people?
No.
We're going to have two, or what?
Correct.
Then, then people, you know, they would show up for the meeting, but you could all, then you may decide that you didn't have a quorum that evening and then have a continuance. That way, you don't have to put a, you know, an ad in the paper.
I would, I would still have to put the ad in the paper for the continuance.
No, you would, unless you have the meeting and for some reason you have to continue the meeting, you wouldn't have to put the ad in the paper, which would save the township money. Plus, it would avoid the situation where somebody shows up.
Sure.
And the, you know, the, the notice was still on the door that the meeting was being held. There was no notice on the door that the meeting had been canceled. So how, when?
So it was canceled the same day.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, if it was that late.
Yeah, because I got notification that a couple of the members were on COVID protocols, so they could not show up. So I
I'm just saying, if you go by the ORC, you, you, you should have had, you should have still opened the meeting.
I was unaware of that. I will definitely take a look at that.
Yeah, I think that, again, because it was unfair to people who did not know, who don't follow you on Facebook or follow us on Facebook. Because that's the only reason I knew that the meeting was canceled.
Sure.
But in the future, I think that if you have a meeting scheduled, especially when you have published that meeting in the paper, the meeting needs to be held.
Well, and I definitely think, you know, after like the first of the year, and you're on the board and everything, maybe we can have a work session or something, because that's something that, since I've been here, I've never had. So things like this happen, and then I learn from my mistakes and moving forward, it doesn't happen again.
Yeah, I think that's, that's important.
Definitely.
Anyway, I think that, again, in that situation where you have a meeting scheduled, it should have gone through Lou, they should have asked him. You know, he's the commissioner, he's your boss, basically, at this point.
Sure.
You know, Lou, can I cancel the meeting? I don't think, Lou, I don't think you were informed of that.
No.
Again, when
Well, and, again, in the past, I've never informed the liaison trustee of the meeting cancellation. I've just taken care of it proactively with my office.
Well, yeah, I think that that's something we will discuss.
Sure, absolutely. I look forward to it.
So is, as far as the open position, or my open position, again, I had emailed you previously, I think you should hold off until the first of the year. Because then, ideally, you need to, if we follow the protocol like Mr. Reber had set up, we put, we put a notice out on Facebook and possibly in the paper that the position is open, to get resumes in.
Sure.
The only fair, fair way to do it.
Sure. Well, also, in the last time we spent money putting it in the paper, I think I got one application from it, which is more than none, but
Yeah, I mean, but again, if we're going to set that protocol, is, which, what had been set up for the other openings, I think we need to keep with that protocol.
Sure.
It's fair enough to everybody.
Sure.
Because you can't put somebody in without advertising the position, because no one else has a chance to apply for it. I think that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. I guess that moves on to the trustees' reports. I'll go first. I'd like to thank Dups for, let me go back. Last month, I thanked Dups for a donation to the entryway of the cemetery. And today, I'm thanking Dups for another generous donation they made to the cemetery. The entryway looks great. They have decided to help us out with our, our project we're working on down there with the building. So that was very nice and over the top and unexpected. So thanks again to them. I can't say thank you enough for their continued support of the cemetery, which goes back a long time. They're great, they do a great job, and they know, they know that we do a good job, and they care, and they want it to look as its best. So thanks again to the Dups family. The pool, we meet on this Wednesday, so I'll have a report for you next month. We haven't, we haven't met in a month or two. WRCG will meet in January. Santa, great job by entire, everyone, setting it up and everything you guys did.
Love us, good volunteers, too.
Yeah, yep, it was nice to be here, nice to see everyone that came, and great to see Santa as well, so. Haley, I do have one question for you.
Sure.
Sorry to add to it. Your nameplate says Township Administrator.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have a Township Administrator.
It was just brought to my attention tonight, because when I was hired, I was verbally told I was hired as the zoning administrator and township administrator.
You were hired as a zoning inspector and administrative assistant.
So do we have an administrator?
No.
So how am I going to be the administrative assistant to a position that doesn't exist?
You're an administrative assistant to the Board of Trustees.
Okay.
Actually, to all the elected officials, a resolution.
So I think we need to, that Township Administrator indicates a position that's over our chief and our Jeremy, and we don't have a Township Administrator. I can't foresee in my lifetime where we would ever have a Township Administrator. Miami Township, Washington Township, yeah, but, so if you could get that nameplate changed, I'd appreciate it.
Yep, absolutely.
And my last thing is, I don't know if you guys got a chance to read the press, but I thought it was pretty petty on Mr. Wallis' part, I just wanted to get that on the record. When he, when he indicates that he wants facts and information, and then significant portion of the article that he contributed to was not factual, I have a bit of an issue with, but I will leave it at that, and I will turn it over to Ms. Reed for her report.
All right. First, my kids love Santa. They all came dressed like Santa, like they do every year, and they really enjoy doing it. It's very nicely done, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. I did attend a senior oversight meeting on the 8th. They did recommend a renewal. They are really lacking in volunteers and sponsors. They used to have almost 40 volunteers, and now they're lucky to just get one or two. So if you would like to volunteer at the senior center, they would really, really appreciate it. Their sponsors, there used to be various nursing homes and things that would sponsor, and again, they're lacking with sponsors. They still need a bus driver, so they're going to, they really thought they had one, and they're going to advertise again in January. For that, if you're interested in being the bus driver for the senior center, we're going to be posting that in January sometime. The senior center was used as a polling location in November, and I thought it went well, and they anticipate that to continue.
Did that replace one of the churches?
There was some discussion about that, and I guess I was assuming it was going to replace the Butter Street, the church of Butter Street. But someone was saying that it had, Mr. Heeston said it had not replaced it, and they'd actually moved polling places around, so
Oh, okay.
I'm not, I'm not sure about
Yeah, it's not central locations.
Yes, and they said that it went well. So, yeah, they anticipate, like I said, that it continues there. Unfortunately, their phone system went out, and so this is probably the most important thing, minus volunteers, that's super important, but they do have to change their phone number. For whatever reason, they were not able to keep their phone number, so the new phone number, for anybody that wants it, is 937-853-8900, so.
No, that's like 853-900.
853-900, yes, it's 853. They said they couldn't get any 855 numbers. I don't know, I don't know why, but it was unfortunate. They said they really tried to keep the same phone number that they've had for 27 years, but for whatever reason, they could not. So that is, that's the new number. I think they're going to try to publish that, maybe on even the scrolling thing. I know it's been published in the water bills, they've said, and they're going to continue to do that, so they had to get a new phone number. So I think that was everything for the senior center. Was there anything else, Ms. Reed, that I'm looking over? Okay. My last thing is, I just want to say I really enjoyed actually being on the trustees. When I was elected, first, I did a little research, and one of my first ancestors, Charles, or Christopher Reddick, rather, was a trustee, so I thought that was pretty cool. And also, when I looked it up, I believe I'm the first female trustee, or I was the first female trustee, to be elected in Germantownship. So I could be wrong, that's just what my research found, and so it has been an honor to serve as a trustee, and I've enjoyed my time here. That's all I have, I think.
All right, thank you. Mr. Potter, do you have anything tonight?
Uh, no, my first meeting, so I'll get up to speed. And be prepared for the next one.
All right. Is there any old business? Any other visitor comments for tonight? Yes?
No visitor comments, I anticipated what you were going to say, sorry.
Okay. Do you have anything?
Our new business.
Yeah, well, anything at all, anything.
Yeah, obviously.
David, will you do the name?
David Garone, 14239 Kefar Road, Germantown. I was asked to serve as a representative to the Ohio Benevolent, the benevolent fund, of which I'm no longer interested in serving. Need to elect or appoint a different person tonight. Mr. Cleveland can give you the details on the fund and how it stands.
Would you like to serve in that?
Yes, Lynn Cleveland, 11858 Oxford Road. This meeting, we do need to, with the new elected officials, we do need to establish the board persons and the person-at-large to serve on that fund council. So if you would serve, I would be interested in serving.
Okay.
I have no problem with that. There needs to be two, two elected, the secretary and a at-large, and two police officers.
So the elected needs to be Mr. Heeston as one of them, correct?
The secretary.
Yes. Okay, and then, so then that creates a, that's fine. So Potter or Cross? No, I'm over the plea, so obviously I'll, I'll go
This is, this is for 2022.
I can do it.
Okay, so make a motion?
It does need to be put in the record.
It will be, I'm trying to think, we did a resolution last year or a motion?
We can just do a resolution.
Resolution just to be safe. It's better to overkill than, than to be too little. So that's going to be Resolution 2021-45.
I'll introduce Resolution 2021-45, a resolution to appoint myself, as well as Dr. Cross, Mr. Lynn Cleveland, and Mr. Heeston as a secretary.
Now, why would you appoint yourself? I'm not sure I follow. Isn't it two elected officials?
It's just
Potter.
Yeah, I do Potter, and, because he's already in office.
I'm not sure you can do him until January 1st.
So why don't you do Potter, and then the other two are Muyad, Chokey, and Josh Nichols as the officers.
The auxiliary officers.
And Lou, what this is, is if a reserve officer was hurt in the line of duty, this board would meet and be able to allocate money to that officer to help them financially with medical bills or whatever. And it's up to the board of the two reserve officers, yourself, Mr. Heeston, and Lynn Cleveland, to meet and say, okay, and take the appropriate action so that that money can be allocated to them.
Understand.
Okay.
The money is actually in a state fund, it's not coming out of township budget. Yes. We made a contribution along with several other townships, five or six, seven, eight years.
We only meet when there's a need, and hopefully, we never will have
We, we, we meet once a year to do this, and that's hopefully all we ever need to meet.
Okay.
Let me make sure I understand. You're, you're introducing the resolution for myself, Mr. Potter, Officer Muyad Chokey, Officer Josh Nichols, and Mr. Cleveland. Okay, is there a second to Resolution, what did I say it was, 45?
45.
A second.
Any discussion of the resolution?
No.
Okay, I will call the roll, Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
And Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 2021-45 is adopted. Thank you for reminding us of that.
There's no objections, I will service chair.
Does that take board?
It does need to be recorded.
I will put it in. Okay, and thank you to Mr. Garone for serving this past year. It was a hard job, wasn't it?
I did do some investigation, and it's, in the scheme of transparency, there is none, and the Ohio Revised Code provides for this fund. There was an original number, which is a fig Newton of somebody's imagination, because it's not posted. We contribute to this fund, according to the Ohio Revised Code, in a form that's a little, what I consider hidden, but it's credit against our tax liability. And, but we only contribute if the fund is below 95% of its value, which nobody knows what that is, or if they do, I haven't been able to find it. So when it comes to the amount of dollars that's available, you don't know. I guarantee you don't know. And where it stands right now, I don't know. That's all I know about it. But it is in the Ohio Revised Code, how it's funded, where it comes from, and all that.
That's more than I knew, so thank you for educating me, and probably some of the others, too.
All right, anything else tonight? Yes, sir.
One more thing, Lynn Cleveland, 11858 Oxford Road. The Fire EMS Overwatch Committee?
We'll do the appointments at the org meeting.
Okay. My term expires end of the year.
Yep, we got several, and we'll do those at the January org meeting.
We got, we received the list from the city of those, all those oversight committee, and who is interested in continuing to serve. Your name is on there.
All right, with no other business, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Forgot about this part of it.
[laughing]